Call the Halifax Planning Board into session. All members present except for Matt Bellis. On the agenda, we have discussion of 285 Home Street, Liddell, 319 Mount Pontus Street, elevated roots, pasture land, staffs, bills in January, minutes to be approved for February 3rd and February 17th. I make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
I make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
For a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, I was writing. Excuse me. Where am I? All right, you're tan.
Yeah?
Yeah.
A little bit. I guess windburn, I guess.
You been working a lot outside?
No, not really. Try to avoid that this time of year.
So since the last meeting, we got the calculations over to Amory for...
Want to re-interact it or you got... This is a letter from Amory Engineers PC on 285 Home Street, which is Liddell. It's addressed to us. They went over calculations.
Do I have to recuse from this?
No, I'm just reading. I'm just reading.
Just reading what we got.
Subject 285 Home Street, like I said. Dear Planning Board members, this is to advise that we have reviewed the following documents in support of the proposed construction of a storage garage at 311 to 313 Plymouth Street. What?
I don't know. What's wrong?
All right. I'm like, what? Okay. Let me start over because...
Must be a copy in place.
Yeah, it must be. So 285 Plymouth Street. So they looked at the site plan for 285 Plymouth Street and revised... That was revised on December 30th, 2021, prepared by Land Planning. The drainage analysis dated February 10th, 2022, prepared by Land Planning, which we had at our last meeting. The purpose of our review has been to evaluate conformance with the Halifax zoning bylaws and good engineering practice. The background is that it's a 2.52 acre parcel is currently developed with a concrete block building with a steel building addition that was recently constructed. There is a paved parking in the front of the building with the remainder of the lot a gravel surface. It is located in the industrial zoning district off the east side of Home Street, across from Garden Road, and adjacent to the commuter rail line. The majority of the site was wooded, but has been recently cleared to create a gravel storage yard. The purpose of the site plan is to propose storm water controls to prevent runoff from flowing into Home Street. There are four existing leaching catch basins on the property. Two of the existing leaching basins will be connected to new subsurface infiltration systems consisting of the plastic chambers surrounded by crushed stone. The other two leaching basins will remain, and one will have roof leaders from the addition connected to it. A third subsurface infiltration system is proposed across the rear portion of the property about 80 feet from the building. Comments? One, the drainage calculations indicate that the proposed storm water system will be capable of infiltrating runoff from all storms up to and including the 100-year event. Two, subsurface infiltration system dash two is not designed for traffic loading, and there is a 15-foot wide break in the middle of it with connecting pipes to allow vehicula access to the rear portion of the property. This system is designed to capture sheet flow from the rear portion of the property and infiltrate it through the crushed stone top of the system. Due to the gravel surface, the system will require regular maintenance, cleaning, to ensure its continued functionality. An operation and maintenance plan schedule should be developed for all of the storm water controls. A fence or wood logs, landscape timbers, et cetera, should be considered along the downstream berm of the system to prevent vehicles from driving into it. Outlet... Oh, sorry. Three, outlet pipes from the leaching catch basins should be equipped with hoods. Four, a double grate should be considered on leaching catch basin LCB dash four to limit ponding over the grate during high intensity storms. Five, ZBL 167-28G3 requires all properties within 300 feet of the site to be shown on a plan, including structures and their uses, parking areas, driveways, pedestrian ways, and other significant features. Six, if exterior lighting is proposed, it should be shown on the plan and specifications provided. Should you have any questions, please call us. Very truly, Amory Engineers. Okay. So...
Is there copies of it?
No. That's Liddell. This is Carver Street.
Those just need to be signed.
If we're going to discuss this?
Um...
If we're going to discuss it?
Yeah, we're cute.
So this is the plan he was referring to?
Okay. So we have... 300 feet. Looks like they show 300 feet. I'm considering that this would be showing 300 feet. Maybe not here, but it sort of does there, I guess. 300 feet. Why would he note that? Why would he note 167-28G3?
Well, it was a full site plan.
Where's the scale? There it is. 20 feet. Very scientific, yeah. We asked him for the lighting plan at the last meeting.
He said he still has it on here.
Yeah. So that's in the works. In the works. It looks like we have probably...
When he applied for the site plan... And then we accepted the site plan, we granted him the waiver for the 300 feet.
Waiver.
That was bad for him.
Mostly everything around is... I mean, the railroad, on some of it, I would actually say it's 200 feet. Some of it not. So obviously, we need to tell him to double grate LCB four.
Well, I mean, his comments are going to the engineer.
Yeah, Land Planning.
Yeah. So, you know, that went directly to them.
Yeah.
So we just can approve what he gave us for comments if you want. But the 300 foot was a waiver that he had asked for and got originally.
So the hoods, I just basically think it seems like we did that at 49 Cava, too. There was recommendations of hoods being added.
Yes.
And obviously, there'll be a maintenance program and make sure they'll put in wood logs or something to make it so that cars won't all go into that area, right? Hopefully.
Does that operation and maintenance plan need to be provided to us before the final sign-off so that we can at least say that that's what the expectations are?
I would think so.
And then if for some reason it's not being withheld, then it can be brought up that it was agreed upon and not being acted on? Does that make sense? So any of that?
Number two.
Reading through all of them and saying an operation and maintenance plan schedule should be developed.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can request that they do that. Request that they meet the comments that he made.
I'd agree. And he's going to come back in with the lighting anyway, so we should let him know that we want him to follow that.
As you say, this is a checklist. It's just answer the checklist.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Can I speak up about stuff I noticed on that, too? I guess Amory obviously hasn't been to the site because there's no paved parking there. He said there's paved parking, but there isn't.
In the front.
And it said on that plan that paved parking will go to impervious materials around it. It doesn't go to any catch basins or anything. And if you look at the elevations, the grate at the front of the building is two feet higher than the street pitch and the street. Where's the water go? You've already proven that it doesn't go into the pervious material because there's any pervious material. So that whole front parking area, it just doesn't have any drainage whatsoever. I don't see how it's going to work. And Amory didn't even say anything about that. There's two different water tables on there. You got two test holes, exact same elevation at the existing grate, but the water table on one of them is lower than the other, probably so that drainage on the track side of the building will work because you have to have your two-foot separation. It's just stuff I noticed on the soil logs and the pervs. And, you know, one of the tests, there wasn't any test hole dug out in the area with the 15 feet going between up behind the building. There's no test hole there. So how did they design the system there with no test hole?
And that was on Land Planning's plan?
Yeah, that's the newest plan that they're sticking to.
So on Land Planning's plan, it says proposed paved parking and entry area. You're saying it's not paved yet.
No, it says proposed. You just said it says proposed.
No, I'm just making sure.
Amory is saying it's paved. He said the patio was paved.
What I meant was, it's not paved yet.
No, it's not yet. But even when it's paved, where's the water going to go? I'd like them to show us that, you know, how all that water is going to go. I've never seen a paved parking area on a building without drainage. I mean, what pervious area is it going to go to? Especially when you got a two-foot difference between the building and the street and it's maybe 65 feet. That's a long ditch. Where's it going?
Okay. So do you want us to ask Amory if he actually went to the site?
Ask him that. Ask him about the difference that he described. I've never seen a plan with two different water table elevations.
Juvan, have you seen that?
Yeah, I have. I mean...
Yeah, when you get two test pits, exact same elevation at the top of the test pit, pretty much within inches, within probably, I don't know, 150 feet of each other, and there's a difference in the water table. And the one up back is the same height as the, you know, the higher water table.
That's just... As you go up back?
Yeah. I'd have to just look at the plan. The little plan they give you is useless, but if you put it on the phone, you can blow it up and actually study it and, you know, look at everything. But I just point out stuff I noticed. I didn't see Amory put it on the write-up.
So I think that we should ask... All right, I have a question. I would think that an engineer would have to go to the site. Is that usually how it would be done?
Not typically when he's reviewing the drainage calculations. I mean, if he needs to go out there, I mean, he could drive by and take a look.
Is he taking the proposed paved area or is like missing that word and thinking it was paved? And does he not know?
I don't know. I mean, we could sit here and speculate what he's doing, but he says that, then we just need to ask him. Is that based on the proposed plan or is that based on existing conditions and have you been out there and taken a look at it?
Okay. Can we write a letter to Amory and ask him those questions?
Yeah.
Please.
The original, you know, the original conditions on the original site plan said it has to meet MCN four stormwater regulations. Are they going to certify as it meet that?
I love staring at you through the bar.
No. My eyes are wide. Look right around. You know, and said they're just using it to store antique furniture in the building, but now they have a storage yard. And they always said we just did that because we liked how it looks. And why can't they just tell what they're going to do with the property? That's all. I think they should be honest. You know, plus, they store cars in there. You store cars in industrial property, you need floor drains. I don't see any floor drains in the plan.
Did they store cars in there, man?
They were. They put it... Oh, they had door right inside the building, right when they bought it. And they had a bunch of cars in there earlier. They're not... You can't see them through the window now. Maybe they moved them up back. You know, I know they told one of the contractors there, he told me his office, that Josh said his uncle's going to store cars there.
Okay, so I think we need to ask these questions of Amory. I'm sorry?
I did the inspection. There was cars in there.
Why would you put an overhead door on the side of the building if you don't plan to put cars in there? So there's a lot going on. I mean, why can't they just be honest? Just tell the truth what they want to do. And the lights, you see, I got a picture on the phone of the lights lighting up the side of my house. You know, and we've asked, how many meetings have I been here? Said just do something with the lights.
And just do one?
And all they're doing is just harassing us now.
I drove by the other night.
They can't dim the lights down and then give me a six-foot stockade fence.
I drove by the other night with side lights.
Or abbot lightings or something. They can't do anything with the lights and give me something to shade me from the lights.
We're probably 300, 400 feet away up on a hill, and it lights up our... We have like a three-story house, right? A walk-in basement, the base level, and upstairs, and it's lighting up the upstairs.
It lights up my garage. You can see it on my garage. It's probably...
Right to the bedroom window.
Probably 600, 700 feet away, easy.
Okay, so we're...
Is it harassing or...
We've asked...
It definitely is. See, the thing is, they don't need those lights on. There's nothing there.
Let's not accuse them of that. I know that the side, but we don't want to get into like anything that could cause animosity.
Josh had been here twice. I asked him to do something with the lights, and he said, sure, I'll get right on it. Doesn't do a thing.
Okay. So Josh is going to come in?
Well, I think what we need to do is we need to send them a letter saying that during the meeting, you said you're going to turn off the lights. They're not off. They need to be off, and we need to have a lighting plan.
Yep.
Aren't the lights supposed to stay within your property?
That's why we're trying to...
And that's what the lighting plan shows.
They're not staying within.
The lighting plan is supposed to show how many looms are hit in your property line, how many go beyond.
Supposed to be zero by the time it gets to the lot.
Yeah. Doesn't mean that you can't see a light from there.
No, of course you can see it, true.
But the casted light is supposed to be dying out at the property.
So when I drove by the other night, this light on the side of the building...
That's what you're doing to my house. See how lit up it is?
Was off. Is that the one you're not talking about now?
See how lit up my house is? Those aren't my outside lights. Outside lights, my outside lights are underneath this door.
Y'all's wouldn't have shadow.
That's like the roof, my roof.
I mean, I think at this point, we send them a letter saying that they need to shut the lights off until such time as they get us a lighting plan to prove that they're not violating the... The bylaw, the lights going outside the property.
You motioning that?
It could be a motion.
Need to add anything to that before we do? Like the letter, what are you doing inside of the building now? This says that you have a storage yard. What's going on? Can you clarify this letter? Maybe send a letter from Amory with our letter stating that we need some explanation on some uses, the lighting plan, and please turn off the lights until we get that. Is that where we're going to go?
The storage yard?
It says...
It's an Amory's letter.
Yep. Exactly.
Is that his interpretation?
No, it says that on the site plan. I mean, I don't care.
No, I'm just saying.
Of course. You store stuff in the property.
Exactly. It's going to be...
No, no, I know.
Why can't they just tell them what's...
Says gravel work yard.
They're going to do what they want anyway. It's just why can't you just come out and say it?
It says gravel.
Some of that original condition is to store antique furniture in the building, period. If they're going to do anything more than that, then they have to go back to the book.
It says gravel work yard on the site plan.
I think one of them said storage, said storage. And plus, another thing I noticed in the plan was up on the back of the property, you have industrial zone and residential zone, but they got that backwards.
Oh, the...
You got a residential, you have the cultural on their side and the industrial the other.
It's flipped, yeah.
That's been there since day one.
It is the line.
It's the first time you showed that to us.
Yeah, my take thing is like, you know, the paved area. I don't see how it's not going to run onto the street. That's the whole problem.
Okay. Oh, I just wrote on this plan. Well, that's definitely a typo that can be taken care of by Land Planning.
Where's the catch basin in the front?
Right there.
The catch basin?
I thought so.
Such a big plane.
Can you do a site plan with soil logs and, you know, water table elevations, everything per test? Does that have to be witnessed by somebody or just the engineer just taking the word for it?
The engineer. Looks a little better.
Just tell us more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're all right.
You want a bigger one?
No, I'm good.
Your eyes are...
I wasn't going to say it. You said it.
Do you want to look at this or are you well versed with it?
I think it will.
All right, well, I just...
So the paved area is supposed to hit this?
Yeah. Oh, he didn't want to look at the... That'll just help you. So there is no test hole over that side? Is that what it's... That's one of the things?
This is a new catch basin here.
And there.
This doesn't have a soil logs and water table elevations and stuff on it?
That was before it. Remember? Because this is... What's the date on this one? I don't, because we don't have it already folded out. Yeah, so it's both... Right.
But it still has that note with the...
It's the old plan.
Park and using a slope to perviate.
It's the old plan, just to see it better right now, like the lot.
This has nothing to do with the new stuff. I'd like to see it.
The new plan was December 30th.
Yeah.
With the soil logs. Okay, so we did a letter. Did we take a vote on that?
I don't think we take it up what the motion was.
Wait, wait a minute. Want me to try and write it out? Hold on, let me make a list so that I can do that.
I said it might be better off to list it out so that...
Lighting, off. My pen's not working.
Rough next one.
Lighting. Off. Plan. Test holes. Four. New pits. New leaching catch basins.
What's that? Well, you're doing two different letters here. So first off, the motion was to send a letter to Liddell.
Yep, this is the one I'm doing for Liddell.
That would be the lighting. And we're going to do a letter to Amory asking about if it takes in account parking in the front. The test pits.
Yeah. Test pits.
Because the pavement in the front is non-existent right now.
Were we going to ask Amory? Yeah, this is Amory. Non-existent.
Because he was talking like... He, he was talking like it was paved.
And where's that runoff gonna go and is it sustainable? Which is what you're asking.
It's, it's, it's.
So we're gonna say that the paving in the front is proposed. Is the drainage capable of accepting that water? You should be able to determine that. Someone's gonna pick it up.
Is the drainage, where are gonna pick it up? Front?
Is the drainage gonna pick up the runoff from the paved parking? I mean, does it? There's a catch basin in the back, but that's just for the roof, looks like.
Okay. And, um, can we ask him if it was an assumed, um, storage yard or?
Well, I don't think it really is gonna matter. He, he, he's gonna take a look at that, but the, the question of that would be back to Liddell is to the use. It's not up to Amory to decide.
Yeah, right, 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 right.
So who's in charge of enforcing that? Let's say he is, just going, cars there instead of antiques.
You, you are.
Listen, don't threaten me with that. I don't need any more reputations in this town. Don't, don't go creating them for me.
It's the, uh, zoning law.
So if we have the conversation with them to say, what is, what is this, originally it was for antique furniture and then we said that if it's anything but that, then you need to come back and discuss. We've been, it's been brought to our attention that it's something other than that. We need to come back and discuss and say, no, it's just antique furniture. Then we send, then somebody gets sent out to inspect. I'm just saying it's a pretty easy thing to get around. Move some cars out, put a couple more chairs in there.
And then you put them back.
And then put it back.
They had, you can see them all.
I'm not saying that's what he's doing.
No, you can see it, you can see it from the street. They're right in the windows. When you go by, you can see all the cars in there.
Yeah.
But then all of a sudden, I think they disappeared because I know, I know a plumber working there that, uh, Josh told him that mine was gonna store cars here. He said, well, you're gonna need four drains. Needless to say, the plumber didn't work there anymore and the cars disappeared out the front window. So they couldn't have them on the back. You know, you can't lose no windows.
So what I'm saying is, I understand. So my question is, is who enforces that and then what, what's the ramifications of it, I guess? It's just, it just keeps storing in the back corner where you can see it, you know? Send somebody out, slap them on the rest, give them a warning and then, or is the hope that he comes in and goes, yeah, where's some cars there?
And he's gonna do four drains and that's kinda tough to record the floors. And the floor, it was like, okay, okay, I mean, that wasn't the, the cars, right? That was, that was just a shock. It'd be a nightmare if they had.
We should be careful about like bad, you know, like putting any implications on, just in case he's, you know, upset with that. We, we don't wanna like cause any issues like that. You know what I mean? Like accusing him of doing something that he may or may not, you know what I mean?
So again, what you're doing, you're voicing as, he's refused, right? So he's voicing his concern as a, as a resident. We're hearing it and then saying, well, the best we can do at this point is ask him to come back and speak to those points.
Yep.
It turns right down to the zoning, just like the passive grounding. He says for his own personal use storing cars, they still had to do the four drains. It's in that zoning, they have to do that.
Yeah.
Well, for the use.
It's a different story altogether.
Vehicles are in there, then you have to.
Have the vehicles in there, you have to afford it.
Okay.
So the letter to Liddell is to address the lighting and to discuss, coming back to discuss the use of the storage.
Okay.
So let's start with one first.
Yeah, is that your motion?
I motion that we write a letter to the Liddells to ask specifically about the lighting, for them to do, shut the lighting off until a lighting plan can be presented, as well as to come back to discuss with us the current status of the use of storage for their.
Use of the building.
Use of the building.
Use of the building.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then the Amory one? The, um, I'll make a motion to send a letter to Amory asking about the test pits for the leaching catch basins, the new ones. Um, the paving in the front is proposed and the drainage, is the drainage, um, going to pick up on the runoff from the paved parking? Am I missing anything? I don't think so.
The, um, test pits?
Yep, I had that.
Verify the test pits.
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
The motion is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Way I see it is we have a checklist and it shouldn't be that difficult to work through it, to make it agree, to satisfy everything that's on that list.
Understood.
So it should be relatively easy and shouldn't be this drawn up.
Agreed. Agreed.
For all parties involved.
You guys agree? What's, what, that's good?
Yeah, it's turning out the patchy lane.
No.
He already has his building up and he doesn't.
No, 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 no. Let's not do that.
It is, you got his building for him, you got his building up.
So the water tables are all at about seventy-three.
One of them's a little lower. There's three.
But, but it's modeling. It's not, it's not any water.
Yeah, but it's modeling, it's covered with water.
Right, but.
I just saw it was on.
But where somebody calls a model can be.
Yeah, but that's one, you know, models of the water table.
No, no, what I'm saying is it's subject to who's looking at it, where they see that model. So you could have a little bit of discrepancy.
Yeah, but if you look at how it works out, I mean, it worked out just perfect for that drainage on the, uh, track side.
But that was.
No, 'cause that was lower.
'Cause that was two.
You use a wide table and you have to fit that one with work, you have to put separation.
That was a test pit two.
If you use that high water table, when you look at the, the elevations of the, uh, you know, the leach on the track side of the building, the water table's too high for that. But it's just peculiar that the test pit there, the water table's low. That's why he's asking.
That's on, that's on the, um. I can't, I can't even see what the two is.
I had it on my phone so you can blow it up and keep scanning over it. So they had two papers. They had one with the test pits and.
One with the test pits.
Elevations. It's hard to see on those little plates.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to see is which test pit is which.
DH two is up on the left side of the building.
No, not this way.
DH, DH two?
No, the test pit.
Well, the one, originally when they set up the new revised.
Oh, what it's leaving.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says DH two.
DH two.
Now that I just looked at, I see a, that's before all the.
And then the other one is.
Most recent one, that book like that's updated.
LCB four.
No, it was only three.
There's, there's a folder at the end of the, I don't know if you saw that, it was a separate.
Lot radio.
Oh, that's another DH two.
Uh, I mean DH three.
Sorry, it's oil. And then DH one is right there.
So three is at roughly sixty-three. Two is at sixty-one.
And the other one's at sixty-three.
Yeah.
Topo like the sixty-three, the other one's sixty-one. But if you use sixty-three on that drainage, on the track side, it won't work.
Right.
You'll be too close. So like I said, I've never seen test pits that close together on the same topo, having different elevations of water. They always go by the highest water. But the models. Yeah, that's my, in my experience, that's why I always see. Yeah, you see them, you see them all different elevation, sure, in test holes, but you always take the highest one.
Well, not to make it work though.
Huh?
Not to make it work.
More of one they make it work though. No, you're probably right. I mean, you go by models, models, a lot of people have different reputations for models, you know, some will call it white or some not. But any, you know, down that low, I'm not surprised to see models down there.
So the one up by the tracks is the one eighteen, right?
Is what?
One eighteen.
One eighteen?
Oh, no, that's.
Yeah, well, it's a hundred and eighteen inches.
Wait a minute, that's actually not. DH one, DH one is down that one, right? DH one's at the back. Okay, that's the one behind the building.
It's over here.
Yep. Eight two.
Well, they got drainage in the, right away for the train too, right?
No, there's a drainage ditch out there.
Beside the tracks.
Beside the tracks. The other side has pipe.
Yeah, well, it comes into a pipe right here on dumps.
The other side, the other side, they put it on the ground until they couldn't fit the ditch in.
Yeah, they piped it under.
They tried to fit the ditch in until I complained about it and ended up, 'cause they took a half my yard away for the slope, so. The ditch is like twelve feet wide. So they ended up putting it on the ground drainage so they can keep the, and they shut and then, you know, they chained it to a one-on-one slope on my side too. So it proves I didn't want them on my property. Squeaky wheel. But, uh, so that, like the other side, the twelve foot wide ditch all the way down.
And it looks like the bottom of that is down around sixty-six. Or sixty-four.
Sixteen, seventeen.
So they put the drainage that deep? Oh, they were putting the drainage that deep because of the breakout on the side.
Well, you have to carry that fifteen feet with drainage?
No, but.
It's tight open, that's not.
Yeah.
The water wall running down, you're stuck on the tracks, you know?
That's the crest of the bank of right there.
Yeah. The water was running, just funnel right down there to begin with. They threw some silsuck up there actually. It was actually, you know.
Washing in.
Washing down into the tracks. A lot of water comes here when it rains enough. That's a big area. Looking at two and a half acres with like a three percent grade. At least three, like right around three percent.
Okay, so we got motion on those two letters.
Mm-hmm. This is the newest, well, that's the newest.
All right. Can we see if we can invite them back in for next meeting?
Seventeen.
Okay.
Saint Patrick's Day.
Okay, ten minutes to eight. Wanna join us? Three nineteen on Ponsett. That wasn't bad, right?
No, this is, uh, elevated, elevated roots.
Is that in here?
It's just.
There's really nothing new to the last year. There's really nothing new from that.
Okay. All right. And then, uh, Pastor Lane, I spoke with John Paquette today. And he told me within two weeks they'll be over there, starting to work. And then they will, after that, come in and talk to us about moving forward with, uh, building a house there.
Yeah, finish the road, build a house.
Well, I mean, you can come in and talk to us about what they wanna do. Ultimately, if they put up a bond, they get to build the house. But it would be a great start to get some work done.
Sure. But they said that before, so time will tell.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, it's getting, what, March? So it's gonna be the time of year to start getting in there and get it done.
He said he wants it to be the first project they're doing, so.
Well, that's at least promising to hear. Hopefully it happens.
Wait until it changes, I guess.
Two weeks. So maybe we'll see it before the next meeting.
I think Pastor, I think Pastor Lane has been on the agenda of business I got on the board.
It has, even prior to you being here.
Every week.
Me too.
Yeah.
Well, it's the only way it's gonna get taken care of. It's gotta be front and center. What you said, squeaky wheel.
Yeah.
Bills?
Yeah, please, Billy?
Make a motion to pay Amory and engineers invoice number one five seven nine eight, um, out of the forty-nine Carver Street account for plan review services in the amount of sixteen hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents.
So motion seconded. Motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
Aye. Did I do it again? I was already writing again.
Check. Don't ask any major questions when you're using a pen. To see what a pocket of chewing gum looks like. Good, no, just kidding, come on. That is a joke for the record.
Yeah.
For the minutes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Go ahead, right?
Yeah, cool.
Yep.
You want to read that one, then? That's agreeable, also.
Okay, this is a decision letter for forty-nine Carver Street dated March first to Joseph Pedgursky, forty-nine Carver Street Halifax, um, the reason, number twenty-two SPR two one five. Dear Mr. Pedgursky, at a meeting held on Thursday, February seventeenth in the year twenty twenty-two, the Halifax Planning Board voted to approve your site plan submitted on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. With all in favor, Chairman Gordon R. Andrews, Vice Chair Amy Troop, Clerk Brendan Elliott, and Member Rick Murray. The application for site plan review was for contractor base to be located at forty-nine Carver Street Halifax, Massachusetts, zero two three three eight. Assesses map seventy-one, lot eleven. Said property is owned by Joseph, Joseph M. Pedgursky of Carver Street, the LLC of forty-nine Carver Street Halifax. The site plan was prepared for Joseph M. Pedgursky, um, by Strongpoint Engineering Solutions Incorporated, um, from West Bridgewater on January tenth, twenty twenty-two, with revisions made on January twenty-fifth, February second, February fourteenth, to drainage slash entrance, review comments, and building changes respectively. The planning board approved the site plan review with the following condition. The applicant secure special permits from the Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals for the proposed pole barn and commercial building with welding use and a business. for the proposed pole barn and commercial building with welding use in a business zone and to comply with all other Halifax zoning bylaws. Any change in the use, the scope of the use or the location of the business will require a new or modified site plan review and approval. Any relief requested by the applicant, which is not expressly granted hereunder, is hereby denied. Sincerely, Gordon R. Andrews of the Chairman of the Halifax Planning Board. It'll also go to the engineering company.
Sound good to everybody?
Sounds good.
Yep.
Sounds about right.
Here we have minutes.
I'll make a, a motion. We only have the seventeenth.
Well, that was already approved. Just assign it.
Oh, just assign it. Got it, got it, got it, got it. I was wondering that. I thought we had. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
No, I actually have.
You're sharing.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we have.
Minutes for the seventeen.
Which one was that?
I like it.
The third, huh?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written on February seventeenth, 2022.
So motion is for a second?
What's seconded?
Motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Relaxing.
What'd you have for dinner last night, honey?
Meat.
I was just seeing if you could.
Turkey and salad.
Tell me that later sign.
Oh, I see what you did there.
Nice.
Now you're a pen.
This is town property. Okay, so we have this Reali Environmental Science and Other Business.
Did you get a chance to call him? Why?
What's that?
Did you get a chance to call him?
Brendan Reali.
Brendan Reali. I called and left a message. I didn't talk to him.
So we really need to kind of.
Find out what it is.
He wouldn't name the, the address on the resident's daughter.
Well.
He's working for out of his set, so he just wanted to ask you some general questions. I can put him on the next agenda if you want. And do that unless, you know, he said phone call would probably do it, but.
I left him a message. I'll call him back again. Find out what he wants. And if he wants to be put on the agenda, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
So I think he's asking whether or not our bylaw includes, um, for one six to seven twenty-nine, if it includes.
Coverage.
Yep, for buildings, accessory buildings and impervious area. My interpretation is that it would include an impervious area.
Well, let's see if he wants to come in.
Yeah, I mean, it might be just a simple question. He's looking at something. He wants to determine how much they can cover or something on a lot. Spelled out in his own bylaws.
Sounds like he's reading the bylaws. He just wants to get.
Clarification.
Clarification, yeah, make sure, make sure he's seeing what he's seeing, huh? I hate him.
I would love to see a map of our overlay districts. Can we have that at the next meeting?
For the aqua.
Please, and well.
And then. Like this.
Is that Pedgursky?
Yeah.
For the record, I do have two of those.
Nice.
That I've been drinking. Alex is making me drink. It's like almost three quarters of a gallon. I just didn't want to bring in this big thing.
Wow.
It's faulty to the sea turtle killer.
Well, I was thinking, you know, your kids too, they have to have a world to live in.
Yeah, cause this plastic ball is going to affect my kids.
Not maybe that one.
But I agree. I got, I mean.
Do you want a glass bottle?
No, she wants me to have a glass bottle recycled out of.
Yeah.
Something.
I don't care if it's glass, stainless steel or plastic, as long as it doesn't get thrown away.
What about elephant ivory?
Yeah, that's probably not.
Be a sea turtle.
Kind of got the leak. Great.
Motion to adjourn?
Some motion seconded.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.